Call the meeting to order, call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon. Trustee Raschesky.
Here.
Mayor Pecoff.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
I move to amend the order of business to move executive session prior to public comment. Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Just for clarification, it's going to be the item right before the public comment section of the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Raschesky.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Approval of the February 5th, 2024, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of February 5th, 2024.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to amend the Board of Trustees' meeting, minutes, excuse me, of February 5th, 2024, to correct the following. The approved item, the approved motion for item number 2024/0041, Village Hall Window Blind Project reissue, RFP 23/072, should read, "I move to approve awarding RFP 23/072 Village Hall Blinds, Window Blinds Project to Chicago Blind Company for a total amount not to exceed $52,005.09, which is $47,277.35 plus a 10% contingency of $4,727.74. The motion to recess should be corrected to reflect Trustee Katsinas as the second.
Second.
Any comments on the amended motion? Call the roll on the amendment.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Raschesky.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Call the roll on the regular meeting minutes as amended via the motion.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Or, excuse me, Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Raschesky.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Recreation Advisory Board appointment.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to confirm the appointment of Gino Gentile to the Recreation Advisory Board. Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Raschesky.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Accounts payable February 6th, 2024 through February 19th, 2024 approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy. I move to approve the accounts payable February 6th, 2024 through February 19th, 2024 in the amount of $5,225,014.66.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Raschesky.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Item A, payroll for February 2nd, 2024 approval. Item B, next day plus printer maintenance contract, 2024. Item C, 2024 building automation system services. Item D, ESRI geographic information system software licensing renewal. Item E, winter tree maintenance projects. Item F, turf fertilization and weed control, ITB 23-054. Item G, Peterbilt model 548, heavy duty vehicle purchase. Item H, soils and material testing and engineering RFP contract amendment. Item I, rock salt purchase proposal. Item J, special event permit for Silver Cross Hospital. Item K, police department firing range and emergency operations center. Item L, athletic operations maintenance facility. Item M, land development code substantive amendment, car dealership parking and storage. Item N, land development code substantive amendment, modify entitlements review process. Item O, 153rd Street and Ravigna Avenue Roundabout Phase II Design and Engineering Contract Award, RFQ 23-049. Item P, athletic field user agreement. Item Q, Pyro Musical Fireworks Award. I will entertain a motion to approve items A through Q of the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Raschesky.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
LaGrange Road median turf conversion project, Phase 1, RFP 24-012.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Healy. I move to approve awarding RFP 24-012 to Summer Landscape LLC for a total contract price not to exceed $53,790, $48,900 plus a 10% contingency of $4,890, and authorize the village manager to approve the change orders not to exceed the contingency amount and authorize the village manager to execute all related IDOT permits subject to village attorney review and to authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
And just so you know, this project was something that I talked to staff about. We've got, we have throughout LaGrange Road, we have all of this turf that needs to be mowed weekly, which is unsafe. It's costly. I don't know why it was designed that way. We spent $15 million in the landscaping before any of us arrived, but that doesn't make a lot of sense. So this converts this to a low-mow grass. It only has to be mowed a couple times a year, so makes a lot more sense from a safety perspective as well as from a cost perspective. Any comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Raschesky.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Emergency fire system repairs, OPHFC.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve proposal 23T2677KF from affiliated customer service incorporated for fire alarm system replacement for price not to exceed $41,823, $37,823, $37,823 plus a contingency of $4,000, and authorize the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount and authorize the village manager to execute all contracts, related contracts, subject to village attorney review. Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Raschesky.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Purchase of Juan Fecan BH74 SS Forestry Mulcher.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the purchase of one Falcon Forester Mulcher for an amount not to exceed $41,291.68 per the quote from Alta Equipment Company dated February 12th, 2024.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Raschesky.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Unilateral, excuse me, unilateral annexation Vista Motel, 159th Street and Wolf Road ordinance.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
Moves to dot the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Annexing Property Surrounded Unincorporated Territory."
Second.
Are there any questions? So this particular property is 159th Street and Wolf. It's the Vista Motel, so this prevents any, any development there that does not fit or impair codes. We've seen that Cook County has been allowing things that are outside of the codes, as has Will County, so we need to make sure that that does not happen, and we have the right to force annex this because we surround it, and so that's what we're doing. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Raschesky.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
2024 Taste of Orland Park format.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Raschesky.
I move to approve the proposed format of the 2024 Taste of Orland Park focusing on bands, Orland Park restaurants, sponsorships, community and youth group involvement, and children's activities on Saturdays and Sundays, and eliminating peripheral activities including bingo, the car show, second stage, trivia, and the backlot.
Second.
Do we have a little presentation on this one?
I can do a really quick one for you. Can I get the first slide, please? So we're excited after 20 years of the Taste of Orland Park taking place on the Village Green to be moving the Taste to Centennial Park West, which was presented earlier tonight here in this concept, which is becoming reality. You can see the full layout there with the stage, restaurant tents, sponsored tents, VIP tents, and all the different areas that will host, will be hosting the Taste in 2024. Some of the things, the primary features of the Taste normally include Orland Park restaurants, entertainment, sponsor booths, community organizations, village youth organizations, and children's activities. So those are the core things that really bring people to the Taste. Over the last 20 years, there have been peripheral things added to the Taste, kind of add to it, to draw people. Some of the things have been successful. Some of the things really have not, have not continued to be successful over the recent years. Some of that is because of COVID. Some of it, I think, has just run its course. Bingo has been successful, but in the new site, there's really not a place to do bingo. A tent would be cost prohibitive there, and there's no air conditioning, of course. The car show has seen better days, unfortunately. Way back when, for anybody who's been here for a long time, there used to be a village softball game. The community stage was the second stage. Again, has had moderate success, which has been declining over the years. And then some peripheral things like the trivia contests, the backlot, bags competition, and battle of the bands. So all that has fallen off over recent years. What we're really looking to do is focus on the core strengths of the Taste, and that is Orland Park restaurants, which includes food trucks, entertainment on the main stage, children's activities, and then focusing in attracting nonprofit community groups, sponsorships, and youth groups. We're focusing this year on bringing in national headliners on some nights, as well as tribute bands, and increasing the overall number of entertainers on the main stage. Main stage, mainstay parts of the Taste include the Carl Sandberg Marching Band, which will be here on Friday, the Veterans Tribute on Saturday, restaurants and trucks, as I mentioned, food trucks, as I mentioned, sponsor booths, community groups, and youth organizations, and then kids' activities on Saturday and Sunday from 3:00 to 7:00. It's a bit longer for kids, kids' activities. We have a focus on, you know, not offering things that aren't bringing people in, which would save a little bit of money. So again, bingo, the car show, the second stage, and the backlot area. We're also looking at reducing the number of gates from three gates to two gates, which will save on some savings with staff. Entrance to the Taste will remain the same with the metal detectors and bag searches and allowing just one unopened water bottle into the Taste. Potential savings, estimated savings, a little over $12,000, as you can see in detail there. We're also in the process of identifying opportunities to increase revenues. One of the primary ones of doing that is to have VIP parking on the west side of the metro. You can see we have over 1,100 spots on that side. We're proposing to, or 730 total spots, sorry. We're looking to charge $10 a space on that side, and then we'll still have free parking on the west side for ADA and for vendors that are working at the Taste. And then the east side would be free parking. On the east side there, there's 670 spots right there in the metro side, and then through Centennial Park, there's over 1,000 spots. So charging for that parking with some turnover all three days, we're looking at an estimated revenue of a little over $17,000. Other things that we're looking at for the Taste that are potential savings are increasing restaurant participation costs. We haven't increased those costs for a long time. They pay a deposit, which usually gets refunded back, so we're looking at potentially not refunding that, just raising the fee a couple hundred dollars. We're looking in to help the restaurants to offset any fee increases is to allow them to charge more for their menu items. We upped that a little bit last year, and we're examining that in a meeting with them shortly to talk about that, as well as the cost of alcoholic beverages. In return, if they, if we increase the amount that they can sell alcoholic beverages, we may increase our take. We currently earn $1 for every alcoholic beverage sold, so we may increase that. We're also looking at eliminating pop and water service to restaurants, so historically we provide them with Pepsi products, and that comes at a very high labor cost. We may eliminate that if they're able to handle that. And then overall event staffing. So the new venue with two gates and a little more control with the fenced area allows us to, we believe, to reduce overall event staffing. The Recreation Advisory Board also reviewed this with us and approved this item, the new format of the Taste of the Village Board.
Thanks, Ray. And then also, the, the venue, the way it's laid out, will also help a lot because vendors will no longer, will no longer have to go through patrons to the Taste to, to get to the vendors. We'll be able to use the vendor roadway behind it. So increase the safety also probably increases a lot of efficiency getting stuff there as well and reduces the amount of staff needed to do all of that. Any questions on this from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Just a couple. So back to the car show. I mean, when I attended them, they were usually about 75 to 100 cars. I know we got rained out one year, and actually during COVID, I thought we had a really good turnout. I think it caters to an audience that is kind of starting to not have as many activities. I mean, car shows used to be popular in this area, and now there's fewer in Orland Park, so it gives people to come from all over to a, to a car show. I mean, our thing is being able to bring in revenues from other areas. Well, people come to car shows from other areas, right? So I just think it's a good social environment for people that, you know, do that. Whether, whether we have it or not, I guess that's up to all of us to decide here, but I think it's something we should think about keeping. I mean, it's only $4,500. And the other thing I was curious about, the VIP parking, how many, George, you might be able to, how many spots do we have today without, without the, last year, how many spots did we have to park in?
We probably had, I'm going to ballpark it, 150 spots, maybe.
We have very few spots.
And so, so in this case, we'll have, for 150 for vendors and for VIP, now you'll have about 400 spaces for vendors and VIP, plus 730. If people want to park really close, they can pay, they'll pay the extra for it.
Right, right. And I'm just curious, because so we had very little parking, is what I'm going to, we're going to have a ton of parking over here, and we're looking to have people pay $10 to park. And I asked several people, and not one person said, yeah, $10, sounds like a great idea to park. I mean, it's just.
Well, keep in mind, there's still 2,000 free spots as well that are closer to what the venue was than what they had at Taste of Orleans. So the idea here is being to generate revenue for those people who don't want to walk and want to pay $10 for parking right next to it, but there's still free parking across the street. There's probably actually more like 3,000 spots total over on the other side of Centennial Park.
So, so to further my thought, how many people attend Taste of Orleans every year?
Normally, we get about 25,000 if we don't have any rain out. Last year, we were a little over 21,000, but we experienced rain on, on a day.
And about how many estimated were children under 16?
I don't know.
Because I was thinking, people, and this was kind of a conversation I had with a few other people, people are more likely to pay at the door to get in a few dollars than to pay $10 to park. And let's say, let's just say there were 20,000 adults that come through over the course of the weekend, that at $3 apiece, that's $60,000, and for $10 apiece, we're estimating $17,000.
It would certainly be the board's prerogative to charge for the Taste. We've seen parking at the Taste in other communities. So Oakbrook offers a Taste of Oakbrook, and they have a VIP area for parking, and people will pay the $10. They still have free parking there as well, so if you choose to pay, you can, you can pay for that parking. If you choose not to, there's still ample parking.
Sure. That makes sense. It's just, I was thinking, we've, we've reduced the number of entry points, it'd be relatively easy to collect a fee at the door if we wanted to. So it was just, just a thought, and this unfortunately is the first time we're getting to discuss this, because it didn't go to the committee at all first. So, you know, just thought I'd bring these thoughts up. Thank you.
If I could also, for the, the car show, so one of the things I missed on the slides, I apologize, is that Taste normally starts at 1:00 on Saturday and Sunday, so we're proposing to back it off to 3:00 both Saturday and Sunday. Traditionally, 1 to 3 is a slow period, especially if it's a hot day. The car show usually takes place in the morning, so if the car show, you know, if you're going to have people at the car show, you have to start later in the afternoon, which is going to eat up some of the parking as well. So that is, again, one of the reasons we took away, or proposed taking away the car show.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah, so at the end of the day, I'm not a fan of, of charging for the Taste. We haven't charged for the Taste. I think giving people an option to pay if they want to park really close is a good option, especially considering all the rest of the parking we have there is closer than any parking they currently have to the current Taste. So, and there's way more parking than, than was available previously. So, any other comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Raschesky.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
President Pecoff.
Aye.
Training resources for Orland Park Leadership Development Program.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve proposals with the following vendors for the 2024 Leadership Development Program, Bonfire Learning for the Art of Persuasion, Negotiation, and Conflict for an amount not to exceed $29,000. Gallup Boss to Coach Training in the amount of $40,000. Crucial Learning Influencer for an amount not to exceed $14,418, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review. Second.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Question for George. What outcomes have been achieved from the current level of coaching and training that staff has been receiving thus far?
Yeah, so the Leadership Development Program is relatively new, and so what we're, the way we're going to gauge our success here is Gallup's Q12. So we completed the first Q12 in '23, and then we're going to be able to gauge our improvement with regard to engagement after that. Another thing that we keep doing is we do our recurring citizen surveys, and that gives us a track on how we do customer service-wide and meeting expectations for the public. We have that scheduled again coming up, and so then, same thing, we will compare how we've done against ourselves. So those are our two main survey tools, the Q12 and the citizen survey. We also did a survey not too long ago as part of the, the Master Parks Plan, and that also gave us some information. But as far as comparing apples to apples, we're going to use the Q12 and the citizen survey.
Okay, and then as far as the bonfire training.
Yeah.
Who's going to be receiving that?
So bonfire training is, is, was, so this is our second training with bonfire, and what we do is to reduce costs for training in the long run. These are, except for the Boss to Coach, these are train the trainers. And so what we've done with the first Boss to Coach, which was customer service, we had, I believe it was 25 staff members, and they become the advocates within the departments because we're so spread out in this organization. So then they go back to their respective organizations, departments, and they do the training for, for their departments. So we're going to do the exact same thing with this influencer negotiating, where it's going to be the same, pretty much the same crew that's going to come in here and do that, that training, and then go back and do it for their respective departments.
Okay, and you're doing 25 people with the bonfire training?
Yes.
And you said this is the second time we did it? How many did we do last time?
Same thing. It's about 25.
We have 50 trainers?
We have, they're, they're going to be probably, most of them are going to be the same trainers that did the bonfire the first go-around for customer service. So we're going to have, so we had 25 the first time. Those same 25 will go through this training now, and they'll be, now they'll be able to train in, in this realm.
So first time, they were just participants, this time now it's training.
No, same thing, train the trainer.
So we're training the trainers twice?
Twice. Two different topics, though.
Thank you. That's what I was.
Yeah.
Okay, so kind of seemed counterintuitive.
So the first one was customer service. Yep, so the first one was customer service, and then this one is, is negotiation and influence.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Raschesky.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Executive session.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to go into executive session for A, discussion, discussion of the minutes of closed meetings, B, pending litigation against affected or on behalf of the village or found by the board that such action is probable or imminent. Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Raschesky.
Aye.
Mayor Pecoff.
Aye.
Go to executive session. Call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Raschesky.
Here.
Mayor Pecoff.
Here.
Non-scheduled citizens or visitors.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors. I want to remind everyone that's called up to speak here that you have three minutes. I will also remind everyone that this is a business meeting. I will also remind everyone that this is a business meeting. Any clapping, booing, cheering, jeering, yelling, any of that, and you'll be removed. This is a business meeting, and we'll conduct ourselves as such. With that, Sarah Reddington.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Sarah Reddington, and I'm a citizen of Orland Park. I grew up in neighboring unincorporated Lockport, now Homer Glen, but Orland has always been part of my life. My husband and I chose to move here to raise our family, and my son is now part of District 135. Watching the last Board of Trustees meeting, I was extremely distressed to hear how you addressed the Orland Park residents that came to you asking for recognition, support, and compassion. You stated that you are an American, but failed to acknowledge that the valued members of our community that spoke are just as American as you or I. In my opinion, there is nothing more un-American than proposing to fellow Americans to abandon our country over a disagreement of values. Thankfully, we have the freedom to change our elected officials' or legislation, let our voices be heard. What is more American than being a part of a democratic society and having proper civil discourse? I imagine there are parts of America's policies that you probably don't agree with personally, but how fair would it be of me to ask you to leave the country just because you don't agree? Our Palestinian-American community don't need to be educated on their own histories, and no one asked for that. It was very clear that you are personally not in agreement, but the citizens who spoke did not come to you asking for your opinion. As an elected member of our village, I would encourage you to represent the full community, even those that share other values than you, which, mind you, is not just a handful of individuals. This isn't about me or you, this is about our Orland Park community as a whole. I have reluctantly accepted that you're not willing to symbolically advocate for a ceasefire or acknowledge the genocide that's being funded by our American tax dollars. But what I can't accept is that you're not willing to show the support for members of our village.
Forty seconds.
Support the children in our schools that are heavily affected by this, and you never acknowledged that over 800 residents signed their support to the petition that was shared. You were asked to acknowledge the lack of compassion and support, which was also dismissed. You refused to support humanitarian efforts. You spoke with a man that was arrested for a hate crime, who you chose to call a gentleman, but did not firmly state that Orland Park denounces any hate speech, hate crimes, or discrimination. I cannot stand idly by when you say you speak for your residents, but you failed to represent me and so many others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Chamberlain. I've been an Orland Park resident for several years. I like my neighbors, and there are many great things about living here in Orland Park, including our brave and accomplished police department. However, I watched the live stream video of the last board meeting that took place on February the 5th and felt that unfortunately, that was not Orland Park's finest hour. Members of Orland Park's Arab-American community spoke at the meeting and gave a passionate plea for the village to enact a symbolic Gaza ceasefire. Mayor Pika, you responded that the war is a foreign policy issue in which the village has no influence or authority. Our mayor and our Board of Trustees, however, do have the influence and authority to set the tone for listening and providing empathy over concerns that village residents bring to them. That evening, you said that if you're an American citizen, you can go to another country and support that country, while you, Mr. Mayor, will always support American interests. The Arab-American residents who brought their concerns to the board's meeting that night, among them business leaders, educators, doctors, who spoke eloquently, showed they also fully contribute to America and serve Orland Park's community interests. You know, Mr. Mayor, it wasn't the time for a history lesson from someone who failed to talk about the complexities of the Middle East region. Instead of a conciliatory tone reflecting the terrible human tragedy that Orland Park Arab-American family members are experiencing, your words were, you know, I hate to say this, they were tone deaf, and those of the trustees were mostly mute. You said numerous times that your words were your own opinion, and it struck me how much they reflected a personal opinion, not the words of a community leader whose responsibility it is to represent all his constituents and to provide words that heal. At the very least, Mr. Mayor and village trustees, you can bring forth ideas that console. The village can make a contribution to a nonprofit organization like Doctors Without Borders, who deal directly with this humanitarian crisis, and you can organize an effort
Thirty seconds.
For residents to come together and donate to a village-led effort like we did for Ukraine, and let the residents decide if they want to contribute or not. In other words, bring people together and, as leaders of our community, lead with empathy and community building, both in words and in action. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Noor Shadid, and I'm a senior at Sandberg. I'm an honors AP student, an athlete, and a Palestinian-American, but that doesn't make me any less American than you. Unless you're Native American, you, Mayor Pika, came from somewhere too, but for some reason, you found a right to use rhetoric that others does. You claim you're patriotic, then went on to say Gaza is an Orland Park's problem, but it seems you forgot Martin Luther King Jr. One of the greatest American activists to ever live said injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. He said what affects one directly affects all indirectly. Martin Luther King is the meaning of patriotism. You saying Gaza is an Orland Park's problem shows you don't care about Palestinians being killed in Gaza, implying it's okay for Palestinian-Americans to be harmed here, too. You claim you're patriotic, but it seems you don't care about a about six-year-old Wadiya who was stabbed 26 times for being Muslim-American, or 23-year-old Zakaria who was stabbed for being Palestinian-American, or Mohammed in Taufiq, American citizens who were killed in the West Bank. How about Hisham, Kinnan, and Tahsin, three Palestinian-Americans who were shot for wearing a kaffiyah, one of which was paralyzed? It seems you also don't care about students living in your own town. Us students at Sandberg are completely disregarded at school. We're expected to go on with our daily lives as if nothing is happening, as if our people aren't being murdered in cold blood in the U.S. and in Gaza. Your disregarding rhetoric is being reused in schools throughout the district, and it's completely unacceptable and very dangerous. Hate crimes across the nation have gone sixty, up 60% since the beginning of this genocide, and it's because of the type of isolating speech you, along with many other politicians, have been using since October 7th. You dividing us into a separate category incites hate throughout our community. As a patriot.
Seconds.
And our mayor, I'd imagine you'd care more about that. To be a patriot means to be loyal to a country and its people. We elected you, but you have shown us no loyalty. You've in fact made our lives much more dangerous. We are standing here, asking you to support our Palestinian community in Orland Park. This is your job as mayor, and it's no big ask. Put an end to your divisive rhetoric that has already costed so many lives on the soil you claim to be loyal to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Fozzy Hassan.
Good evening. My name is Fozzy Hassan. I'm an American-Palestinian born in Chicago. My parents moved to Oklaun when I was two years old. I graduated from Oklaun High School. I moved to Orland Park in 1992. My kids graduated from Sandberg High School. My grandfather was a World War II veteran. My father was a Korean War veteran. My uncle is a Vietnam War veteran. My brother-in-law is a Desert Storm veteran, and my cousin is also a Desert Storm veteran. I challenge anyone who's pompous enough to question our patriotism, coming from a family with almost a 100-year history, defending the freedom of this country, and thinks that their Palestinian-American voters aren't watching. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for your family service. Tarek Khalil.
My name is Tarek Khalil. I'm an attorney and activist. Throughout history, Palestinians thrived in Palestine as Jews, Christians, and Muslims. But the advent of Zionism changed the course of history forever. Zionism is a settler colonial and nationalist project predicated on European conquering ideology and infused with a political mission of establishing an exclusively Jewish state at the expense of the indigenous Palestinian population. Mr. Mayor, you presented basic Zionist myths in your so-called history. I can't respond in depth to all of them, but suffice it to say that when you talked about the events of 1948, you never mentioned Plan Delet or Plan D, which was the master plan for the ethnic cleansing of Palestine. You never mentioned Zionist objectives of conquest and dispossession. You never mentioned the Nakba or catastrophe, the most brutal form of which we are now witnessing in Gaza. During the British mandate, Mr. Mayor, the British colonial regime hastened Zionist settler colonial objectives to create a state apparatus for primarily a European settler community against the wishes and prejudices of the indigenous Palestinians, eventually leading to the Nakba and mass displacement of 750,000 Palestinians and the near total destruction of 500 villages. Where was that in your historical rendering, Mr. Mayor? You claimed that Palestinian citizens in Israel live peacefully. From 1948 to 1966, Palestinian citizens in Israel lived under martial law and still today experience inferior services and limited budget allocations, and subjected to restrictive zoning laws and other forms of institutional discrimination and systematic oppression. In Zionist discourse, they're referred to as Israeli Arabs, completely removing their national identity as Palestinians because in Israel, national rights are reserved for the Jewish people alone. There are over 65 laws that directly or indirectly discriminate against the Palestinian citizens of Israel, and under Israeli constitutional law, self-determination was declared unique to the Jewish people alone because, of course, Palestinians are referred to as a demographic threat in Zionist and official Israeli discourse. If racial domination exists.
Forty seconds.
Within Israel, you can imagine the kind of brutalization that exists in the occupied West Bank and besieged Gaza Strip. A large Palestinian community exists in Orland Park, and its residents are funding this genocide with our tax dollars. You say that Orland Park has nothing to do with it. No, Mr. Mayor, Orland Park has everything to do with it. In addition to revising your historical rendering, and I can help you with that, you must also revise your priorities and agree to the most minimal gesture of calling for a ceasefire. This symbolic gesture will be an affirmation of your stance against genocide, ethnic cleansing, and oppression. Your unwillingness to do so will mean the opposite, and if that is so.
Time is up.
Shame on you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board of Trustees. My name is Ramatia. It is my compelling ethical duty to bring our experience and knowledge to bear on what threatens us. Last week, we came as your constituents, speaking of our hurt and pain in the face of a genocide against our families in Gaza. We came to express our concern and disappointment in your lack of support to your Palestinian-American in Arab-American residents of Orland Park. We asked for no more recognition of our pain than what you rightly showed for Ukraine. In your newsletter, you claimed that this was a problem 6,000 miles away, while we are hurting just six yards away. You otherized and disparaged us as lesser citizens and humans. It started with the rolling of the eyes, with the rolling of the eyes and the refusal to look at your constituent while speaking, something you have become notorious for when another opinion dares challenge yours. Your language and behavior was disrespectful, dismissive, and crude. After we respectfully expressed our feelings, you responded with an immediate insult to our very being and existence. I want to clarify something to the Board of Trustees and everyone in the community watching. We didn't walk out of the boardroom because of your opinions and political views. We walked out because you intentionally began your comments with reading out of what looked like a playbook from a Zionistic narrative that is meant to distort our history. We found this offensive and insensitive on your behalf. I want to also respond to Mr. Healy, whose remarks about being a group of quote-unquote unruly group of Palestinians and the need to show tolerance. Let's not forget that it is respect that fosters tolerance. You are essentially unleashing racist tropes while asking us to be tolerant of your lazy racism. Today, we register our rejection of your dangerous divisive and bigoted rhetoric, and more importantly, will not allow it to seep into our schools, local businesses, or between us and our neighbors, or the rest of the community. It is not effective in protecting us, and it plays into the hands of those who want nothing more than to incite violence and hate crimes against particular groups and who want nothing more than to intimidate and turn people against each other. I'm actually blessed to be part of Orland Park, where love, compassion, and empathy are lived by faith and community leaders and residents. Just because we share different views doesn't mean that we don't share common good. We know that we are strongest when we look out for one another. That's what makes us unique and diverse. Your role as a mayor goes way beyond simply holding a position of authority. Respect and understanding of diverse ethnic and cultural groups, their histories, traditions, beliefs, and delivery of service is essential when serving the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yusuf Zagar.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and trustees. My name is Yusuf Zigar, formerly known as Joseph Zigar. The funny truth behind my story is my name. When I was born, my father thought it would be more fitting for me to be named Joseph. Friends and families always called me Yusuf, but legally, I was just an average Joe. The sad reality of this story is the sad reality of your comments that you made, Mr. Mayor. Having to prove ourselves as American is beneath me, but I'm constantly asked to. I'm a second-generation American whose grandfather had the honor of serving this great country. I would like the record to show that this is my grandfather in uniform. You see, all four of my grandparents traveled here and had the normal American experience on boats through Ellis Island. They were patriots and loved this country. I drive American muscle. I'm a hazmat-certified freight broker that has traveled this great country. Born in the USA was my anthem as a product of the '80s. Do these points make me more American than someone that became a citizen one day ago? My answer to you is no. America is a melting pot of many different people, and this great American experience is evervast. Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free. The last I checked, those words are still located on the pedestal of the Statue of Liberty. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Healy, and everyone listening, leadership is credibility. I repeat, leadership is credibility. The Palestinian-American and Arab-American communities of Orland Park, Muslims and Christians, are organizing. You will hear from us when and where it matters, and yes, we have an agenda. And I want to declare it loud and clear to friend and foe, and make no mistake about it, it is not Democratic or Republican. It is not left or right. It is not white supremacy or DEI. It is not cronyism nor cancel culture. Our agenda is to bring kindness to politics and respect inclusion of all our great residents, to let them know that they all belong. Our agenda is to stop out corruption and usher in transparency and accountability. Our agenda is to bring bigger and better business and to ensure safer streets and neighborhoods via the greatest security measure known to mankind. Love thy neighbor. Our agenda is to ensure that our schools rise to our potential as model schools socially and academically. Our agenda is to work with all who are willing to make Orland Park the greatest town in Illinois. You will not succeed in dividing us into white and brown, or Muslim, or Christians, or Americans you like, or Americans you do not. We who want the same good things for our children and the same great things for our town will unite across the fake divides that self-serving politicians throw at us. We will stand united, Orland united. We are an asset, and you are a liability. Let the record reflect.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here to speak?
Board comments?
Board comments, I'll lead off. At the last meeting, I gave a long, over 3,000-year history of the region before being interrupted, and for the first time in almost seven years, having to clear the room. The reason for this history is to remind everyone that the history of the region is long and complicated. Clearly, I am the mayor of the village of Orland Park, and this is the village board. We are not state representatives or senators. We're not state-elected officials. We're not U.S. congressmen. We're not U.S. senators. The board and I have zero impact on U.S. foreign policy. This is an incredibly complicated foreign policy issue that has no bearing on the management, operation, or governance of the village of Orland Park. For this reason, the board will not be taking any action or put anything on the agenda. As I previously pointed out, the comments I made at the last meeting were entirely my own, and I am entitled to my own opinion, and did not represent the village or the trustees. I stand by these statements, and there is no need to repeat them because you can listen to the actual video yourself. Lastly, I will remind you of something I said almost two months ago. Residents can certainly contact an election attorney and try to get a referendum for this issue on the ballot in Orland Park, Orland Township, Cook County, Will County, or even the state of Illinois, and let the voters of those various jurisdictions decide. With that, Trustee Healy. With that, Trustee Healy.
My comments tonight include a couple of general things. We saw a lot of wonderful things tonight. We saw the police department's awards for their bravery and their duty. It was wonderful to see them and their families out there. Their awards were justly deserved. We also saw some advances to Schussler Park and to Centennial West, which I think are exciting, and it's good to see the progress that it's made. And another good thing that we see tonight is people expressing their opinions, even though I disagree with a lot of what's said, but I don't disagree with everything, but I disagree with much that is said. It's good to see people demonstrate their rights. Last week, I challenged the Palestinian community to be tolerant, be civil, cordial, I said, and to obey the rule of law. I'm impressed by your group dynamics tonight, which have not turned into the yelling and chanting of last week, and you have addressed the cordiality issue. I'm impressed by that. The rule of law is still here. It's never left. Everybody's had that. And the tolerance means to allow us to have our own beliefs. We allow you to have your beliefs. I'm not trying to dissuade anybody from what they believe, but we have our own beliefs. The Jewish people have our own beliefs. Everybody's got their own beliefs. As an Irish person, you don't understand the hate that we had for England for many centuries, and it still rises in my blood from now and then. But we get through it, and I know you'll get through it. I feel like you'll get through this too, and it takes a couple generations to get comfortable in America, but believe me, you'll be there. Thanks.
Trustee Radishevsky.
I too want to say congratulations to all the police officers who were honored and to the new police officers who were sworn in today. We do have a wonderful police department, and I'm happy that they were recognized this evening. Also want to address the comments that were made here today and let you know that I appreciate all of the things that you have said and that you do have my compassion. I do have compassion for all people who are suffering. That's it. Thank you.
Trustee Compass.
A little over three years ago, I knew that committed to this service my public moments were anger insults if they directed at me. Three years before that, I sat on the opposite side of this table, observing, and I thought I would not be surprised. But I hadn't spoken one word. If not my goals here, if my goals online, I've been labeled an idiot, a dropout, a racist, a Nazi, and much worse.
Your mic.
Without having spoken one word yet on this subject, I've been labeled online an idiot, a dropout, a racist, a Nazi, and much worse that I will not utter from this seat. Some have even said that I am even directly complicit in the genocide of a people. No, I never expected that. During both meetings here and online, I've witnessed pain, anger, and yes, some hatred. Maybe not by all, but by far more than I ever expected to be directed at me in my lifetime without having so much as even raised my own voice. I am not your enemy. I know that to be true, even though some may deny it, and knowing that leads me to consider that maybe the anger and hate I have received is misplaced. Again, I hadn't even uttered one word, and this has been directed at me. You are my neighbors, but I am uncertain that all of you have truly seen me as an individual and as your neighbor. I claim no expertise on the Middle East. I can and do empathize while knowing that I cannot truly understand the pain that you all feel. However, while a resolution would have no influence on Washington, D.C., or leaders an ocean away, I've heard that you have wished for me to appeal to a higher authority. With that in mind, I hope that you might accept this offering of prayer. Almighty and everlasting God, whose will it is to bring peace and harmony to your creation, we humbly pray for the Middle East. In a region where history is deep and conflicts many, we ask for your divine intervention to sow seeds of peace among its nations and peoples. Grant, O Lord, that leaders and individuals alike may seek your wisdom and guidance, choosing pathways of dialogue and reconciliation over discord and division. May your love inspire hearts to listen, to understand, and to forgive, so that barriers of hatred and prejudice may be broken down. We pray for the protection of all your children in the Middle East, that they may live in safety and peace, free from fear and violence. Illuminate your hearts with the light of hope and strengthen their resolve to work for a future where your will of peace is realized at every community and every home. May your Spirit, the Comforter, bring consolation to those who mourn, healing to those who suffer, and strength to those who are in despair. Let your justice and peace flourish, that lands marred by conflict may find lasting peace. I entrust my prayer to you, O God, knowing that with you, all things are possible. Amen.
Trustee Malani.
Once again, you leave it hard to follow you up. So, on Easter egg hunt, March 23rd, is that what everyone wants to hear about? No, nobody wants to hear about this. I appreciate all of you for coming here tonight and sharing your stories because what do we find out about our village here tonight? We found out we have a family full of veterans. We have another veteran here in your family. And it's the American spirit that brings you together here today, and I understand that. There's a reason I'm silent. I don't know enough about your history to be able to comment, and I respect your thoughts. And that's why I sit here and I patiently listen to everything that you guys have said. As I saw you at Caputo's the other day, walking through the store. We are Americans, and that is what brings us here today, and that's what I appreciate most of all. And we're all going to have our disagreements. We're all going to have things that might be different in our minds, but as we've all said up here, we have our own opinions up here, and we appreciate you coming tonight, and God be with you all.
Trustee Katsinas.
How do we follow Trustee Compass? Thank you. Thank you for being here and sharing your stories. Just as Trustee Malani said, we haven't walked in your shoes. We don't understand, nor have we really experienced what you're going through. We're trying to get an education through your words, which we greatly appreciate. You are our residents. We're an inclusive village. We want you to feel welcome. We shop. Our kids go to school together. There's so much disagreement in the world. Here, can't we come together as residents and be one and have a happy life and raise our family? What's going on overseas is horrible. None of us can even imagine. I'm sure you can because you have family members, but we can't. We're trying to. But why we're in Orland Park here, can we try to come together? Why are we fighting against each other? Why with the kids? We don't need to. We don't need to. We are doing so many wonderful things in the village. Our school district is awesome. Our fire. Look at what we are blessed with here. So if we can just remember that. On another note, I have to say this to our code enforcement division of the police department. I'm sorry, I have to do this because the gentleman, Jason Ziegler, that works there is an amazing young man, so I just want to say thank you to them for all the work they do, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Cindy. And again, thank you, thank you all for coming, and thank you for being respectful. That's the way board meetings should be conducted, and I'm not going to rehash, as I said, what's been said previously. As I've said on multiple occasions previously, as someone who's been to war, I know what it looks like. It's horrible. It's horrible for everybody. It's horrible for civilians particularly. It's horrible for civilians in the whole region, regardless of whether they're Gazan, whether they're Israeli, whether they're Christian, whether they're Jew, whether they're Muslim. It doesn't matter. It's horrible. And anyone who's seen it knows how horrible it is, and we all pray for a quick end to it. Everyone's entitled to their opinions, as I mentioned earlier, and we don't have to agree on everything. And particularly when it comes to foreign policy, again, we have no say-so in what goes on with foreign policy. So I want to focus on all the good things that have happened tonight. Police Department Awards Chief, Deputy Chief, and I know some of our officers are here still, and Leo's down there somewhere, I think, still. So, is Leo still here? Oh, he's in the car. Okay. So, thanks for all the amazing work of the department, as I said, at the Police Department Awards. You guys keep us safe. It's through all the work, through all the hard work, starting with the chief, the deputy chief, our commanders, our lieutenants, our sergeants, all of our officers for all the hard work, putting their butts on the line every single day to keep us safe, and you do a fantastic job, and you will continue to get our support, including what we approved earlier, which was the plans for the shooting range and the training center and the emergency operations center. So that'll be fantastic. Looks like it'll be done by spring of next year, and so hopefully by that time, we'll be moving in there and taking advantage of that. Also, the athletic operations maintenance facility that's going to be done, which is going to allow our Veterans Center to move to a newer building that has a much longer useful life, so that was approved as well tonight, and so that will be used for our maintenance as well. There's additional storage for our veterans groups as well. Then the updates on Centennial Park West and Schussler Park. Centennial Park West, as you saw from the flyover, everything is in great shape there with all the masonry just about done. They said 90% complete, so next week, hopefully, we'll start seeing steel and really start seeing that take shape, but looking for a first concert somewhere around the first week of June. And then The Taste of Orland will also move there, which we heard about, The Taste of Orland, and some changes there, some shrinking of some hours, which saves some money. We have massive parking there now, so it allows us potentially to generate a bit more revenue with some VIP parking as well. But The Taste of Orland, this entire facility has actually been built with The Taste of Orland in mind, so it's actually been done for that. Schussler Park as well, all of the work being done there. We saw the video of that as well, including six-and-a-half acre feet of water that we can now store underwater. Anyone who's been to Schussler Park, Schussler Park was built in the '60s by volunteers, slightly before I was born, but the stories and the sod farm donating all the sod, the hardware store donating all the fencing, and all of the community members coming together to build that park. It was the first time that a developer actually gave land for a park. And of course, developer gave the worst land to the village, the least buildable land. So that park has always suffered from flooding and other issues, even though it's our third-largest park. So all of that underground storage will allow us to use that field regularly, plus we'll have turf fields, which will allow that to be used regularly as well. Home of the pioneers now for practice, and the Michael Schofield III Sports Complex there, and then an all-abilities field that will be coming there as well. So that will be ready, according to, it will be completely online as of May 31st, and that's actually running ahead, so we're in good shape there to meet that deadline. Additionally, we talked about athletic fields. Again, our Recreation Advisory Board, which didn't really do much in the past, it got a lot of input, but didn't really do much. Now they do a lot. They're probably next to our Planning Commission, they do the most because they actually look at these things, they actually talk about them, they actually talk to all of the various people, various sports groups, and get their opinions, and they weigh in on that, and then they provide recommendations to the board. So they also listen to everything on The Taste as well, so they're very active, and Gina, I know you're stuck around, so appreciate it, and welcome back to the board. They do a fantastic job, and that goes to the transparency of the village, which was non... I mean, we talked about when I got here, it was a managed transparency. None of these board meetings were online. They weren't taped. They weren't shown live. The audios weren't even really released, so none of that stuff happened. So now all this stuff is online, so I saw everyone with their phones out. You can just go to YouTube. This stuff is live, so probably a little better picture quality than your phone because everything's there for people to see. So again, I want to thank everyone for being respectful, and I hope everyone has a good next couple of weeks until our next board meeting, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Call roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Radishevsky.
Aye.
Mayor Pecov.
Aye.